All right, I'll call the Act and Planning Board meeting of Thursday, October 21st. Put order, it's just after 6 o'clock. And maybe we'll take at the, look at the minutes from October 7th. I move we approve the meeting minutes for October 7th as written.
A second?
All right, all in favor of the minutes? All right, I wasn't here, so I'm not gonna vote. All right, so, um, move on to old business. Unless we wanna take it out of order, 'cause we have people in the audience, or...
A few?
Yeah. I think that's fine, we'll just go with the agenda as it is. Um, so, Kristen Wait, map 125 lot 17. And we were just over there. The existing structure's 54 feet from the high water, and they're proposing the new structure to be 80 feet from the high water line. All right, take it away. What do you have to give a quick presentation of?
Okay, yeah, looking to tear down the existing and rebuild. Uh, right now, the closest point to the water is 54. Looking to push back to the new closest location being 80 feet, um, for new construction. And yeah, that's about it.
Is there a new septic design for this one?
There is. You guys should have, I have one right here.
Do you wanna just pass it around, or do what you want?
Whatever, whatever you guys want.
You guys want copies, or you wanna just look at it briefly?
I just wanna look at it, this, there's a new system.
Which one are we on here? This?
Kristen Wait.
Yeah. But there's a section on retaining walls, too.
Damn it. I'm just kidding. See, uh...
You did have the septic with it?
Did you have the other one for the other one, too, if they're gonna, I don't know if they're gonna want?
John, did you say there was a picture somewhere for the house?
Uh...
What proposed building is?
This one?
Yeah, that's it?
Yeah. Well Pat, this one shows the building envelope, right here. Maybe what you were thinking about at the sidewalk. It's like, this whole little square is the, you know, could go anywhere in that vicinity. I guess my biggest question was about, uh, what, what it's gonna be like in front of the house once the project's completed with, in terms of the retaining walls, the, you know, the stairs and that sort of thing, like, I don't know if we wanted maybe get a, a topo of the site, like the existing topo, and then a proposed topo?
Yeah, it's just tough, 'cause if you push me back, you go forward, this and that, and everything changes.
Right, right, sure.
Over again, but, I mean, you're right, some kind of wall will have to go at the end of the driveway or something, but I don't, I'd like to have lawn and flat there, and then stairs down, and leave that all how that is. Uh, I mean, that hill has to stay there and whatnot. The only spot I see having to have some kind of wall is end of the driveway.
Yeah.
So, which can easily, possibly can be brought back to 100, which is probably ideal.
You think you can put a retaining wall at the 100-foot line?
Yeah. 'Cause I mean, if I got the house, say, 28, and I need, then I could, you know, I only needed to be able to get in the garage.
Hmm.
You know what I mean?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that would help out tremendously. Thank you.
I did change that, that's also the change.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Yeah, I mean, it's, is there anything else anybody wants to see on the plan before we, I mean, do we feel like these plans are sufficient to approve this, uh, project, or...
Is this the deck porches? Is that what, are you, is that your concrete surfaces, or is that just the covered, the three-seasons porch they have on the front of the house?
John, I have to take a while to figure out, go through my notes.
What, what are you double-checking?
I asked him if the, in his calculation sheet, for 37, 30% expansion, if his decks and porches was that, was the concrete, was, if he was counting the concrete in that, or if that was just, um, I think if they had a three-seasons porch on the front of the place, I'm not really sure.
Great, of course, I see what you're saying.
I'll be way under it.
What, what they're proposing to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Shall say.
Even then, I'll review all my notes and show you all my work, so.
Right.
You'll see exactly where it is.
You could approve it, and just have them, have a condition to show that plan for the vegetation retaining wall.
Which I have to do anyway to him.
Yeah.
Stormwater vegetation, all that.
I'm good.
As soon as I had. You said you were here for good.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application for greatest practical extent for, uh, Kristen Wait, map 125 lot 017.
A second? Um, baby?
Do we wanna list a few conditions on that? Just, uh, no closer than 80 feet from the high water line? And for a re-vegetation plan to be submitted for the footprint of the old building, and...
Any disturbers?
Yeah, 'cause how much of that concrete are you proposing to remove?
All, all of it.
Pretty much all of it, so maybe the stairs?
Yeah.
So that area too, so I need, you know? And it should include, I guess, the, probably the trees that where the garage are, your replanting should be in front of the camp, or, you know, closer than the new camp to the water. So the, the 80 feet, the re-vegetation plan? Like to see something about stormwater, but you'll take care of that, Jason?
That seems pretty good.
I'll name my motion to include that building no closer than 80 feet, and, uh, a re-vegetation plan for the front area with the house and the concrete.
All right, all in favor?
A second, all in favor, yep.
Yep. All right. So... So next up's the greatest practical extent, Mike Hershey, map 142 lot 001.
Yep, same thing, looking for a tear-down, rebuild, um, I give the proposed septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking to, let's say, for a, basically like to rebuild, push the house back 100, leave a 10-foot deck in front of 100 at 90 feet. So move it back about 20, 25 feet from the existing.
Did we ever find a number for how close we are right now?
Nope. I can scale it off this print if you want.
I don't know if it's crucial, I was just curious.
You know how to use that thing?
I do. Yeah, 25 feet, so 75.
So you're proposing to move the structure back 15 feet, essentially?
Yes, it's good value.
Yeah, okay.
And the reason you can't go back the extra 10 feet for the deck? Is it pole or something?
Yeah, it's mostly that temporary, well, not temporary, that telephone pole halfway down the lot, um, just trying to keep a little bit of a distance away from that, um, if we come back that extra 10, it sounds crazy, but we're probably taking that pole out, and either going underground the whole way, or moving that pole back, so.
Really? Is the pole on this, man? Now is it getting bad?
I think it's that little dot, right? Right there?
Uh, right there, yeah.
And so, you're moving 15 feet?
15 feet back from existing, yeah.
And if you went 25, I can't read what those distances are, but if you went 25, why does that impact the pole?
With the house and the garage, it impacts the pole. Just since he's coming back, we're gonna be that close to the pole with the new house.
It looks like it's gotta be a, almost a...
That's gonna say it's...
75 feet behind the house, doesn't it?
It does, I was trying to look at those distances, it seems...
It's pretty hard to tell on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about that, 75-ish.
So if you went 25, you got 50, and that's too close?
So you're saying if I went to the 100, not the 90?
Yeah, so if the deck was at 100.
Yes, I'm pushing my luck there, I'm tight as can be to that pole.
Really?
Yeah.
But we don't have a picture of the proposed...
Don't know how big the house is.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's for their own, they can configure it however they would like within the...
Off a long distance.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing else there that... The septic's out of the way, the well's out of the way, it's flat terrain right there.
It seems to me, well, it's hard to tell on this, you can't really tell on this.
I think when we went to the lot, you mentioned that the neighbor out front had space, like 30 feet, so we might be thinking that the lot is bigger than it actually is. I think that everything on that side of the street doesn't belong to...
Yeah.
This particular...
Hard to tell, but, part of the street, so here's the street over here.
Hmm.
Property owner, there's a line here, that's where his neighbor's well is, so he's a good chunk across the street. Too much to do with the new house location, but...
And what were you saying that flat area was, as we were walking out, Gavin was looking at that?
The owner said, the previous owner had some kinda like, perilla thing there, but I...
Oh, okay, so it's just a...
Yeah.
It's not any kind of a system or anything like that?
Yes, the neighbor has like 30 to 35 feet on the other side of the road.
Is the deck gonna be an open deck, or enclosed deck, or...
Plan's just to be open deck.
Can you close in, any deck, Jason?
Um, if, if, yeah, if it's a, uh, permitted deck, and, uh, if you wanted to close it in at some point, yeah, you can.
But potentially, it could be more living space?
If the roof, if there's a roof over and stuff like that, and then you're just looking to, to close it in, yeah.
If it becomes living space, though, with like walls, then it goes into the...
Right.
Volume calculations, if it's just screened in, it stays in square feet.
Okay.
But with just 10 feet in front of 100, I wouldn't be close to 30% issue at all.
I was just thinking later on down the road, if...
Yeah.
I mean, what, why not? I think the house is, um, you know, it's back further than it would be, and I think with that slope, I think it would be difficult with the deck, the further you go back, that slope is so steep, you can't even see the water. So I think with that 10 feet, that would, I don't think that's unreasonable, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, as long as the, the main foundation and everything...
Is, is behind, I mean, the main thing is behind, right?
That's kinda my thought.
The deck is not under any kind of foundation or anything like that?
No, it'd just be frost posts or sawnage, so yeah, the whole, the meat and potatoes would be behind the 100, the foundation, the, that part, and it would just be...
Yeah, I get the bulk of the house, the main house is behind the 100-foot mark.
Anything else that anybody saw when we were out there, or...
Only a room for everything.
I'm good with it.
Good spacing, actually.
We didn't really even check out there, access to the water, that's what all this is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I looked down, I think it's scary. I got some work, work to do there.
I mean, there's no, no proposed changes to that.
There's a building permit in, um, nothing to do with me, but...
Right.
For sure there is, David's mentioning to me.
They're gonna do something with it.
Yeah.
Just bring it up to code, fix it how it is, I guess.
The decking is off the, the deck part of it, I don't know if anybody else noticed?
No railings or anything.
Yeah.
Is it, what is the, uh, it says landing and landing frame? Are those, uh, just like other decks down there, essentially?
Yeah, they have like midway point to the bench, just take a rest.
It's wicked steep, it's wicked.
Kinda goes down.
Yeah, this one's pretty, that's pretty...
Yeah.
What are the dimensions of those things?
I don't know, I didn't do anything to do with the permit.
Yeah. Looks like that would be a nice place to sit and check out the lake from, pretty, pretty sizable. Deck right there. All right, well, so, anything?
I'm good with it.
All right. So I guess we're looking for a motion... To approve, uh...
I'll make a motion to approve the greatest practical extent application for Mike Cursey, map 142 lot 001, to move the house back no closer than 100 feet, uh, and the deck on the front side no closer than 90 feet from the lake.
What was the map number and the lot number?
142 lot 001.
On the top of the application?
I got 029.
02, yeah, 143 029. Yep.
Is that not it?
That's not it, on the application.
It is technically two lots, and then...
It's 140?
The tax, the, uh, survey says tax map 142 lot 1.
The, um, actual property of the house is on 142 01, 001?
Yeah, apparently those are merged, which is not a big one, but...
Just on the application. Technicality.
I noticed it and fixed it on the agenda.
Okay.
So the agenda is right?
Correct.
Okay, so my motion stands.
And it's correct in the minutes.
Okay. I second?
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business, greatest practical extent, Jennifer Nielsen. Margaret Nielsen.
How you doing?
What's going?
Um, so we're here to ask, uh, for approval for, uh, in June, unfortunately, our cabin, um, we lost it due to a fire, and so we are here to apply to rebuild. The original camp was, uh, was built in the 60s, it was 15 feet from the water, um, and looking at our narrow lot, um, near on the point, um, we would like to propose to, uh, would move back to 19 feet as the closest spot to the lake. Just got a lot of space behind it to where, where it hits our neighbor's property, um, to push it back even further.
It was right here.
Oh, okay, it's confused.
Yeah, it's an interesting lot.
Yeah, it was there, and they're proposing to put a septic, I believe, like right around here.
Correct.
And where's the camp, the, the proposed location?
Uh, it's almost on the same location, we're just moving it over or narrowing it down a little bit.
Can you show with the cursor at all?
Can, you guys, can...
Sure. I don't know if this, this is probably good.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, do we have any sort of...
Pack it.
We must have a packet.
I mean, it's really, it, it's definitely was right in, right here, and that's where we're looking to put it back.
It was more block structures, and now the, the one that we're working on, I think is more of a tangler.
There.
So we're able to move it off the lake, we're actually able to move it four inches off our neighbor's property line compared to what it was, as this one, and because of our rights that are deeded in to the landing and stuff like that, we can't move it too much down.
There's rights over here.
So we kinda have to stay right in that same location, but like I said, just by kinda doing a more rectangular shape in the structure, we're able to kinda meet the guidelines a little better, or get off the lake a little bit better, and like I said...
And, sorry, the, the overhang that would be 19 feet from the lake, it's, it's not the actual living space, so the living space, the closest would be 24, uh, 24, 9, is what we've kinda mapped out. So the overhang is really, kinda hit a footing, um, it's not enclosed, that would be 19 feet.
Is anything going to change with the septic system and tanking anything else?
There is nothing there right now.
Oh, okay. So you'd be putting one in? Pretty much, she's just rebuilding.
Yeah.
Improving. Sorry for your loss.
We liked our old cabin.
Yeah. You're gonna lose a lot of valuable things.
Just numbers.
Oh, sorry.
Making new memories.
It's just a one bedroom.
Yeah. Again, it's more of a place just to kind of hang out near the lake and enjoy it.
And that's what it was before, is one bedroom with a kitchen nap and a little celebration box.
Do we have anything that shows the... Is this what we're supposed to be looking at right here?
Yeah, that's our property and that's the old cabin.
This, this is just a copy of the survey that we have. And so the old camp was right here.
Yeah.
This was actually the old camp. You can see, it was right on the line for the neighbor.
Sure, yeah.
Um, this is just our little drawing of sort of moving it this way a little bit.
Yeah.
And then this is what, um, we did to kind of show where it was before and where we're looking to move it over and back.
Okay.
This is the dock. Those are two docks.
Yeah.
So we're about nine feet from the hole.
How about the septic? Do you have a, you're gonna put a septic in or...
Yes.
Yeah, they got a septic.
So is there, where would it be? Oh, on this, on this map here.
Uh, there's a utility pole. Uh, can you help me find the utility? Right here?
Yeah.
This is the utility pole. It's right, it's right in this area.
Yeah. Then you're putting in the well too or...
I mean, think if we do a...
Where's your water source?
It runs down from the lake, old system, over the working out point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the most practical.
Uh-huh. Okay, so this one shows the stuff, yeah, okay.
There's the old camp.
So I might have missed this, but are you building the same size? Have you done any thirty percent?
We are at the thirty percent.
Already thirty percent? Okay, here it is, right here.
Yeah, this might be a little, yeah, you got that.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's the actual configuration of your lot? So you have a, a main house and a garage? Is that what we're looking at or...
Yes, that's what you're looking it up at the top, if in the larger section, if you will. But yes, that's the actual configuration.
Yeah.
So you can imagine the headaches.
And when you, when you leave the main, when you leave the house and you walk down to the lake, it's nothing but, you know, it's very steep, so it's not like flat. So there's really no...
Right, the house sits up.
Practical place to push it back towards the house, house.
And like I said, if you go back further in line, there's, people have rights to landings and stuff like that, so we can't move it down into the bigger section. So that's why we're kind of locked into the existing location that it was.
A lot of right of ways there?
Yeah, unfortunately. My grandfather was good at that.
Is there a, some sort of documentation of the...
I'm unaware if there is.
Of the right of ways, just a, a physical document?
Oh, and the deeds?
And the deed. Do you have a copy of the deed in the packet?
We, oh, I recently, we, we have, we have an attorney read it. So that we, when we first inherited the land, we had a lawyer read it and interpret it to us so that we understood what we should be telling our people with right of ways or not. So that was good to know, to learn.
So there's, so on the, on the left side of the peninsula, there's people access docks there pretty much?
Yeah, I can kind of show you. We use this as, so this would be our landing. The old cabin was on this line right here, so about nine feet off the... This is a second landing and they have rights to this. So we can't really push too much over because then we'd be encroaching on their rights. They have access still, but again, we're locked in.
You can drive here.
Yeah, there's like right in this area, you can drive if you will.
Was here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, that's the back of the cab. So on this side, they have rights, that little wellhouse, if you will. And that's, that was the old main house. So in front of that little wellhouse, you can park. But then the next landing, this landing right here that I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Is, they have rights to that. So it's just, like I said, we're kind of locked into that.
And then there's two, there, yes, there's a little, there's a ten-foot right-of-way little ramp that...
So on this side, you can see right here, this would be coming in from the house, if you will. So the landing's right about where that wooden piss is, uh, down in the corner. Yeah, so that would be our landing and the landing is basically where the picture ends on this side of it.
Right.
So like I said, it's, we're unable to really kind of utilize a main part of our land down by the lake, if you will, as far as the structure.
How big was the old one?
Uh, about six hundred square feet. I might be a little off on that.
So you're pretty much same size?
Yeah, we're, we're just going with thirty percent, but yeah.
It was five thirty-two.
Five thirty-two.
I'm gonna go up just about a hundred. That five thirty-two included the old decks.
Schedule the sidewalk.
You could, yeah.
I would like to, just...
Right.
Yeah, but well...
Anybody else think a sidewalk would be a good idea or...
I don't think it's ever a bad idea.
Right, sure, sure. Is there, um, much erosion on those, um, lanes down to the people's docks there? Like as you, you know, your driveway access and their driveway access, how, how are the roads maintained?
Well, they do have a driveway access, but like our road is...
They just drive there.
There is erosion, uh, for this...
I wonder so much part, you're down by the lake?
On actual lake or going into...
Well, any of the, when, when you have your, um, picture that shows the whole lot, just, just what the access is like down to this location and...
Oh, but there's not.
Yeah.
And, um...
There's actually one road kind of dead ends right on that section. So it kind of seems like it's naturally following, but it's actually, it ends at our property line. Um, we have an access road that goes down to it. And then from our property, you can walk down and it's a full road or, but it's all grass and such. So it's just downhill. So, but, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but granted, it ends right at our property, if you will, on that point.
Yeah.
So you can kind of just drive right in with no issues.
Mm-hmm.
It's very flat and, you know, very...
I won't say it's maintained, but it's a campground.
Yeah.
Just to get in there with a few little drives and stuff. So I can talk to you in the winter.
Well, yeah, I think the, I think maybe seeing it would be helpful.
And that's something I'd be curious about, the condition of the lot, not just the sighting of the structure, just the, you know, attention for erosion and things like that. Other things that could be looked at at the same time. But it does look pretty flat from this, this picture here.
I mean, I would say, I would, I would describe it as extremely stable down there. Very flat and very... So we drive, we drive from park right down there, you can park cars, it's not, um...
I think what Gavin's talking about is just trying to put some conditions to make sure that the plantings get put back and, and if there's no need for that, then...
A lot of those trees have already been removed because of the fire. The fire was, uh, it tore through pretty much all those trees.
Hmm, that one right there, right?
So if you went down there right now, you're not gonna see any of those, any of those trees right now?
Well, on the very point, the trees...
Yeah, oh, that cluster of trees.
All those trees right in that middle section are all gone right now, so it's...
Yeah.
So everything along, right in front of the cabin, the trees are gone.
Root balls are still there.
Yeah.
Like obviously, um, that, that, they had to stay there, but, um, they were all fire damaged pretty bad.
I'll leave it up to you guys, if you think we need a sidewalk.
Right.
I didn't hear you better. He's, he's, leave it up to you, or you think we need a sidewalk or not one or... Hey, just one question. There's two foot four from neighbor on your little drawing. What, what is that?
That, that's how far, it was on his property line previously.
Okay.
That's what, the two point four is what we're cutting off of existing. That's, well, like I said, it was literally right on his property line.
Oh, so you, you're moving it back, so then...
We're trying.
They're okay code wise? I mean, with you?
They're trying to get off the line as much as possible.
Trying to get that easy.
Yeah, with the lake, you know, our, our main concern is getting away from the lake if possible, but we're just so trapped in there, there's a lot.
Our neighbor had, you know, this day we were down there measuring, he was right down there with us. His property, but he knows what's going on.
It's always a good thing to have a little bit of...
Like his family, it goes back on that point.
I got a, I got a friend on, yeah, Luen Pond, his grandfather owned all that property before he got beat it up. His son still lives there now, but...
My grandfather was Charles Moore, so, and the plumbers and stuff, they go back, you know, play back.
What are you thinking, Gavin?
I think we're just still trying to decide on a sidewalk or not, pretty much. I don't know how much we're gonna be able to do to move the structure.
They're just rebuilding almost same spot, same thing.
Like I said, we're basically changing the ship.
Kind of foundation you got going with this?
Um, monolithic?
We're just doing a slab.
Slab, okay.
And puttings, and puttings for the...
Okay. Yeah, my only concern will be the digging if they're here. But if it's just a slab.
Yeah.
Since they're close, it's cool.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, good solid soil down there, you know? Put a slab on.
You don't have to go far to hit one.
No, I'm dealing with that in my backyard.
So what, the overhang is like over a patio? Is that the plan?
I think we're just planning footings right now and then, we haven't gotten that far. But we definitely would have the...
Someplace to grow shade, basically. We're looking at most of the shade at this time.
Yeah, we want something sturdy. Yes, we counted it as part of this work.
I don't see a need, I mean, if we're just...
Welcome to Mount Aliso.
Yeah, I think they're pretty limited.
Yeah, basically it's just a rebuild with an improvement, actually, to the movement of the property line.
Right, sure.
Want to try to grow more trees? Yeah. Need some good shade trees, right? With no leaves, no. No pines.
Luckily, there's, there's a lot of vegetation that was already growing back.
Yeah.
When the fire occurred, it was often...
Funny how that happened because I looked at Yellowstone Park, not to get off the subject much, but as much of that, that actually burned, ten years later, it grew back even nicer.
Right.
But it did come back.
Well, we didn't see it grow up that time in the summer.
Yeah.
What is your roof, roof contour like for your overhang? Is it a, is it like this or...
I can show you a picture of what we're, sort of...
We don't have it in the final, yes. But yes, we're gonna do a piece. We haven't finalized, we should say that. I would like something that shows snow very easily.
And then, do you have, what's your access gonna be like? Do you have stairs coming off of that that are...
Off of which?
Off of the overhang, like your...
What you say over here?
Or is it gonna be a, a porch, so to speak, or is it just a...
Just columns down to the ground. So it's just basically a shady area, just providing shade.
Like literally, that bit, like no...
So you come out the door and go down a couple steps into that area?
One or two at the most.
I'll show you if, if I stop.
It'll be like a patio with a roof.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't gonna be, we don't have plans yet.
There's no way to get that ten feet up.
It would be very...
There might be, but I gotta get a couple beers and do it. What you did.
Right.
Again, nothing this fancy, but just straight, like flat. Nothing, no steps or anything.
You're pretty much just coming off same level as a slab.
Correct.
It's just a roof, but...
Yeah, okay.
Smart with the points.
We want to stay away from both.
Yeah.
The only concern we kind of had was, you know, the runoff or which way your roof pitched, because if it was all going towards the lake?
Yeah, no.
You get an awful lot of runoff from the roof and things like that, but, yeah, nice.
Right.
So you're doing one this way and then the other one be?
Right. Overhang would not, right, that would be the overhang. So it'd be, it'd be parallel with the...
Pitched, yeah, just...
So away from the water, if you will.
Yep.
And then the main structure. I don't think we could have a full follow-up, but...
Right.
Because what I'm revisiting is the main structure, they would be...
That, that one over, of the overhang going out that way.
Okay, yeah, that's a small one.
Yes.
And we're not going up any higher than where we were, I don't think, so we're maybe a little higher. But so it'll be the same basically runoff that we had before in the central hall.
Make motion.
Me? You good?
You got that job, you're good on it.
Oh, that was my job, honey.
Yeah, we were waiting. So good at it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the greatest practical extent application for the Nielsen's map, two oh eight lot thirteen. With the camp no closer than nineteen feet from the water, which is the distance from the overhang.
I'll second it.
Any other conditions anybody interested in or...
Planting vegetation for erosion control, perhaps? Just a general statement?
Yeah, vegetation plan, I definitely, you know, if they're putting in a septic, there's gonna be fair amount of digging from the camp to the septic and gonna be a fair amount of ground disturbance overall.
Uh, I think you go, it's on the variant, there's a variance for it, on the back packet.
Yeah, there's a variance.
Sixty-five feet.
Yeah.
Sixty-two from the neighbor, maybe as well.
Yeah.
It's a good chamber system, I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything Kenny designed?
It was designed by a, by a great reputable.
And he decides it's going to be good. So, no worries, yeah, no worries.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
See you guys.
So where did we end up with the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance?
The, we had a pretty good discussion on the definition of dwellings, and trying to figure out, let me back up, in terms of the rental issue, the rental issues, trying to ensure that we cover both long-term and short-term rentals, and the language appropriate to that. Bernie had some experience with a house he owned and rented up in Portland, and their ordinances addressed this. So he was going to go and get some of that language to bring back, so we could look at it. Chris suggested we look at Sebago, so I took that on, and Sebago didn't have anything on point for us, they had, well, I looked at about 10 towns, Stratton, Eustis, Rangeley, Rome, New Sharon, Belgrade, Raymond, Sebago, and Lovell, and none of them address short-term rentals, so they're not, their definitions aren't going to be very helpful to what we're trying to do. So I think we need to see what Bernie's pulled from Portland, South Portland, wherever he was, he was looking. You know, it's kind of interesting, some towns approved or authorized rooms without eating heads and sleeping, right, so our definition, I'm not sure about our definition, but a lot of the definitions talk about rental units, but they have to be so big, and they have to have eating kitchen heads and sleeping. One town did talk about boarding, you know, borders, where you're just doing a room, that we could probably lift some boarding house in Lovell, any residential structure where lodging and lodging and meals, lodging or lodging and meals are provided for compensation for a period of at least two weeks. So, and there is no provision for cooking in an individual room, so that was part of the issue we were concerned about with Airbnb, which I didn't know, I didn't know they just rent in single rooms. But most of these, again, it's, none of them have taken on the issue of short-term B&B type rentals. Rangeley defined, you know, hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, but they also said, any transient accommodations which do not meet the definitions of those shall be deemed a motel, so by the book, I guess Rangeley could call an Airbnb a motel. But they then don't have any, there's no section for, you know, a application or requirements if you're going to do that sort of business. They have, well, they do for motels, but it was more concerned with the building of them. I didn't see a section of, you got to have egress and all that. So it wasn't very much on point, although there may be some language, once we see what Bernie has, that we could stitch together or leverage for what we're trying to do. And just as an aside, on the other issue on piers, so we talked a little bit about them, and Bernie was of the mind that maybe we shouldn't, and I'm not speaking for him, I'm just trying, because you weren't here, the, what went down, he read a lot of the strikeouts that we had for piers, that actually was pretty good stuff, I mean, it's stuff that we would still want, right? Like, not to interfere with an existing natural beach, you know, not affect fisheries, no larger than, so there were some requirements that get lined up, because we were doing away with it. So his opinion was, maybe we just leave it alone. And in almost all of these towns, just as I was going through, I looked at their definitions of temporary and permanent, and they were all, almost all, just like us, it was that time base, simply if it's out of the water, if it's in the water seven months or less, it's temporary, if it's in the water, over seven months, it's permanent. So I, you know, obviously, that has to have some more discussion when Chris and Bernie are here, but I'm not sure I don't agree with that. It's a double negative, meaning I think I might agree with that, leave well enough alone.
I think Bernie's argument was that there wasn't any recourse, should we leave them out?
Yeah.
And that was his biggest reasoning.
Right. So then it would kind of be by exception, you know, I know the prior CEO was concerned about workload, and there's no way he could do it, and in fact, he wasn't doing it, so he wanted to make sure the thing complied with actual practice, but I think if we leave it in, then it's kind of, it's there for protection, and if a complaint comes in, then, you know, Jason would, would get involved, otherwise.
And you were talking about leaving it in in the chart, which?
Yeah.
Which is a lot easier than, than burdening the CEO with a full-time job just doing the docks.
Right.
Because it would be.
But if somebody put in some sort of weird docking system that took up half the bay, you know, there would be recourse for a neighbor or somebody who had.
It's a good thing we have lakes and not oceans, so we don't have bays.
Well.
Wars.
Just kidding. Always going to be somebody, right?
Somebody's going to push an envelope, always.
So we're leaning toward not changing anything to do with docks right now?
No.
For this year?
Yeah, I, we certainly didn't vote on it, and we just had the discussion, I'm not sure there was consensus, but I'm, as I'm, as I thought about it, I think it does make sense to just leave it alone this year.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Pat, what do you think?
No, I agree, I was, I was thinking ahead, what else, what other, what other things were on there, one was forestry, one was?
Forestry passed, right?
Past, yeah.
Yeah, the storage buildings.
Yeah.
It was the docks, the forestry, the storage buildings, and the rentals.
Yeah.
So, and rentals were still considering, going to wait for more information, I guess.
Right.
Wasn't storage building strictly the administrative stuff, you know, the?
That's what people objected to, was the.
But there was no substantive.
Land use chart not being.
Exactly.
Correct, yeah.
So I think this one, just if we administratively fixed it, right, the letters.
Yeah.
Because I don't remember a substantive, substantive.
There we go.
Reason, you know, to, people were against it, whereas on the others.
Right, right.
Short-term rental, it was, you know, most people were, or the people that were against it, one of the primary reasons echoed by one of the selectmen was, well, you know, we really should address all rentals, but the short-term guys were singled out, and if we're going to do it, we should address them all. And forest paths.
So, I mean, these performance standards that we have proposed for short-term rentals could be just adopted across the board for all rentals, is that?
Yeah, we were trying to play with the language and just find something simple to put, you know.
I know Bernie and I, we're looking at each other and thinking, why bother with short and long term?
Right.
Just rentals.
Yeah, yeah.
Period.
Right, so I think there's a definition, definitional requirement, and then, which is what he was looking for, how it's addressed, at least up there.
Right, because our definition was rental of legally existing single-family dwelling, whole-house rental for a duration of up to 60 days at a time, so while we were dealing with this whole-house rentals up to 60 days.
Right.
So we, we would have to consider that rental of a room.
Right, which is news to me.
Yeah.
Last meeting, I didn't realize they did that.
Right.
That's what I kind of got on the dwelling part, because the word dwelling, in a sense defined, can be used in the rental. Rental of a dwelling is different than rental of a, you know, storage building or anything else, so once you define dwelling, then that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about everything else, you know? Not, I kind of looked at, because we didn't have dwelling, wasn't quite defined, I don't think, and we kind of looked at the definition of that, where actually, I think the second line was actually more the definition of it, which says, more or less, it's a place where you can eat and sleep and cook, explains a dwelling. And we got off on rentals, which were, okay, is this a dwelling or boarding, see, that's one word that didn't come up, was a boarding, that kind of explains that it's, yeah, it's just a room, or a space, or without any of the other dwellings.
But I would think that that room would be in a, a house that had to meet these criteria, so to speak, I mean.
Well, we, yeah, I mean, I could foresee, maybe we have to tweak them a little bit, but certainly like the egress window, you know, that sort of thing, I would think, yeah, that would apply.
Again, what about a blanket statement for someone that's renovating a house, they have to go through the planning, I mean, through the code enforcement office anyway, and they have to meet certain codes, you know, like a blanket statement, you know, provided they meet the codes.
I was thinking about that in connection with this last application, actually.
Yeah, it was a, it was a unique one, because they had a, an existing.
Home.
House and garage already on the lot, we were just dealing with an accessory camp.
Right.
Which.
They have the right to build because it burned down.
True, but it's interesting to see.
Under the standards, they wouldn't be able to get that close to the water, they wouldn't be able to meet the codes and so forth, but.
But today's building code, they would have to comply with the things we list there anyway, right?
Yeah.
They'd have to have smoke alarms.
Oh, yeah, I put that in there.
Yeah.
This mandatory, that stuff's mandatory when I let a structure, I let the bill something.
But I mean, as far as the long-term and short-term rentals, I mean, it's pretty much covered under the code.
Look, so renovations, you don't have to bring, so, yeah, you want to bring it as conform, as much as conformative as possible, but sometimes you, some stuff is grandfathered, so if you were tying into an existing structure that has, you know, something that you wouldn't allow today, you know, especially like plumbing, so they don't allow drum traps, you know, now it has to be a P-trap, but if you have an other, an existing one, they still allow you to use it, you know, so there is some stuff that people can get away with, but we try not, we try to, if I can, if I can switch something to something that's more efficient or conforming, then I do, you know, but there is some instances where things are grandfathered, and there's not much I can do about it, you know?
Right, like if they were renting a single room out of their home, are we going to ask them to upgrade their whole building?
Right.
Or do they just have to comply with?
That was my thought, was the grandfather clause kind of gets you there, because there's no need or code that says I have to upgrade my house just to rent a room.
Well, I think that there should be.
But, but maybe we would need to add that, depending on the thoughts of the board, so to speak, because.
Because they're making money on it, so.
I mean, because you're still dealing with a lot of these same, you know, like the septic, for instance.
Yeah.
You know, you're renting one room, are we going to make them go through this, you know, state-approved septic, I mean, it's not a bad idea in terms of lake quality, but is it going to really be that much more load on the septic, but then they're renting two rooms, or, kind of seems like the scale of the?
But they would have to have it looked at in order to get the permit.
Sure, I mean, I'm fine with that, I should, just something we have to iron out.
Regulated, you know, if the system isn't going to handle it, then they shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's interesting, because Bernie talked about that, too, he had one window in a bedroom that was not compliant, egress compliant, and then he had, but upstairs, he had another room that was, and. But today's building code, they would have to comply with the things we list there anyway, right?
Yeah.
They'd have to have smoke alarms.
Oh, yeah. I put that in there.
Yeah.
This man, that stuff's mandatory when I let a structure, I let them build something.
But I mean, as far as the long-term and short-term rentals, I mean, it's pretty much covered under the code book.
So renovations, you don't have to bring, so, yeah, you wanna bring it as conform, as much conformity as possible, but sometimes you, some stuff is grandfathered, so if you're tying into an existing structure that has, you know, something that you wouldn't allow today, you know, especially like plumbing, so they don't allow drum traps, you know, now it has to be a P-trap. But if you have an other, an existing one, they still allow you to use it, you know? So there is some stuff that people can get away with, but we try not, we try to, if I can, if I can switch something to something that's more efficient or conforming, then I do, you know? But there is some instances where things are grandfathered, and there's not much I can do about it, you know?
Right, like if they were renting a single room out of their home, are we gonna ask them to upgrade their whole building?
Right.
Or do they just have to comply with-
That was my thought, was the grandfather clause kinda gets you there, because there's no need or code that says, "I have to upgrade my house just to rent a room."
Well, I think that there should be.
But, but maybe we would need to add that, depending on the thoughts of the board, so to speak, because-
Because they're making money on it.
Yeah.
I mean, because you're still dealing with a lot of these same, you know, like the septic, for instance.
Yeah.
You know, you're renting one room, are we gonna make them go through this, you know, state-approved septic? I mean, it's not a bad idea in terms of lake quality, but is it gonna really be that much more load on the septic, but then they're renting two rooms, or kinda seems like the scale of the-
But they would have to have it looked at in order to get the permit.
Sure, I mean, I'm fine with that. It's just something we have to hire an hour-
Regulated. You know, if the system isn't gonna handle it, then they shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's interesting, because Bernie talked about that, too. He had one window in a bedroom that was not compliant, egress compliant. And then he had, but upstairs, he had another room that was. And the city ended up okaying him, because the firemen could get in, I guess people could get out through that other room, and the firemen could get in through that. So even though he had one room with a window that didn't comply, he was okayed. So I think it'd be interesting to see that, that language from up there.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the case, we have a lot more to talk about.
Yeah.
In what he comes back with.
Yeah.
Findings. I would just like to mention again, as long as we're, are we moving on? Are we finished with it?
Sure, I think so.
Okay. The comprehensive plan, we need to start talking about it, at least, and how to form a committee and get going on it, because it's 2005, and it doesn't recognize that after ten years. It's not recognized. So we haven't, our comprehensive plan has not been recognized for a while.
It was eleven, two thousand-
Eleven?
I thought it was two thousand-
They made some, some changes to it since it was initially adopted, but they weren't huge changes. You might say right on the cover of the thing, right? So the comprehensive plan committee needs to be kind of initiated by the selectmen. So-
So do we propose that to them, and how do, what's the process for getting this going?
That's a good question.
Okay, so we just need to start talking about it.
Yeah.
That's all?
Yeah, no, I- I agree, yeah.
Did they, were you around for the last one?
No, it was, I mean, no. Two thousand five.
I was just wondering, was it separate volunteers, or was it the planning board? Or did they have volunteers?
I think it had members of the planning board on it.
Yeah, I almost feel like-
Comprehensive plans, everything, right?
Yeah.
So that would involve our portion, Rhodes' portion.
Right, but there has to be-
Recreations' portion.
Yeah, it would be great to have one member of each committee come together to create the new committee, I guess, would be one way to do it. But then you're kind of just putting more load on volunteers. I mean, if there was other people in the community who were-
Interested.
It would be great to try and find those people somehow.
Yeah.
And get them to-
Yeah.
Bring it to the selectmen's attention. It would be a good way to go, too. But, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I wonder if there is another way to form a committee other than waiting for it to be created by the selectmen.
We need Bernie.
Right. Yeah.
I think he could advise us.
Well, I would think if you're on their agenda sometime, I mean, somebody has to put a bug in their ear and get it on the agenda, that they talk about it, or figure it out.
Yeah. I feel like the selectmen aren't interested in the comprehensive plan, so it slows down the process.
Yeah, it's kinda their baby, in my opinion. I mean, that's-
Right, but-
I thought it was the planning boards.
The whole plan?
No, but to, to initiate it and-
Yeah, that was my take, too.
Well, that could be. I mean, that's easy enough to do, right? Just-
But, yeah, we need some volunteers, I think.
Yeah, I mean, because it would be hard for us to say, "Oh, we should just start discussing the comprehensive plan."
Well, I guess-
At eight o'clock at these meetings.
Yeah.
Right.
After we go through these, I mean.
I think what they do with the original comprehensive plan, if you read through it, there are a lot of questions, and they put out a questionnaire to the town. And with the internet and Facebook and all of that, it might be pretty easy for us to do. We could just start taking a look at it, and maybe just thinking about, you know, how to approach it. If we don't have a committee, maybe we could get something started, and then maybe a committee would come as a result of that. I just wanted to start talking about it.
Yeah, I mean-
I think it's important, because we have a lot of things coming in town. And what does, what do, what do the people want the town to look like?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the benefit of the questionnaire, you know.
Well, why open-
But are there new, after this number of years, are there new questions that we weren't smart enough to ask, you know, fifteen years ago?
Right. A lot has changed.
Even the questionnaire probably has to be reviewed.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
That might be a good way to, to get started, is review the questionnaire, and if, you know, we come up with one that we like, then we could ask the selectmen, you know, as step one to a new comprehensive plan, we need to sound out the town.
Right, start collecting our data, anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a lot of just facts and figures in there that has to be-
It would give a committee something to work with.
Yeah.
But all the questions about growth and stuff, that is good. We jump, sound out the town.
Right here, it's not far into the plans to Acton Comprehensive Plan Survey, so we could all look at this. It's only, what, four, four pages, and, you know, things like, "What is the single most important issue facing Acton today?" And then, you know, it tells you, you know, number one, development, number two, property taxes, is what they came up with, but we could all read these four pages and-
Update them or-
Yeah, see if we think this, this survey would stand today, or what we could do to-
I think that's some good homework.
Okay.
How about, can we get those mailed out to all the members? And then we can all put it on our agenda for next meeting?
Get what mailed out? A comprehensive plan?
You need a comprehensive plan?
No, just a survey question.
You have one of these?
I don't.
Okay.
I need five copies of the computer, so I can email them.
The, the four pages of the survey is what-
But I mean, if you want.
The whole book is on the server.
Right, well, you could email them the whole book, sure.
Sure, so we'll print them up one.
Yeah, because it's-
And make one for them.
But maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe emailing out this survey would, would be great, because then maybe Chris and Bernard could, could notice it and think, you know, realize that's what we're thinking, or-
I was thinking, just the survey with a note that this is what we're looking at, if you could please review these questions, and just keep them in the back of your mind, or keep them ready, or start looking at them.
And I think also look at other towns, you know, what other towns are going through. I think when they have the same pressures-
A lot of things have changed in fifteen years.
One, one of those towns, it was nineteen ninety-eight, was the ordinance and comprehensive plan.
That's when it started, right? That's when everybody started, nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
Mm-hmm.
But there are, you know, like, is, are people concerned, or, I don't know what the right words are, but this whole short-term rental thing, you know, probably not a question in there at that time, or rentals in general, the solar farm.
Yeah, that's something.
They're big questions.
That's something.
And those are, you know, we've done what, two or three of them, anyway.
So I think for next time, that would be good, you know, that we started early, so I would like to make, make a motion that we, we end the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's good homework, and I'll second the motion.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right.